Good morning to all of you this morning. Before I call the meeting to order, I have some sad news to announce that some of you may know. We've had several surveyors in the area over the last few decades and Mr. Bobby Long has been surveying property here in Brunswick County for, I believe, about four decades. Is that fair to say, David? Much of which has been on this island. So those of you that may have known Bobby Long should know that he passed away in recent hours and just keep his family in your prayers if you would. And with that, it's time to start the meeting and we'll officially call this meeting to order. And as always, I guess, Madam Clerk, do you have an agenda in the back of the room on the table?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and since we've called the meeting to order, we'll turn our attention to item number two on the agenda. And since I had no part in calling this meeting to order, I guess someone is going to want to make a motion about executive session. Is that what the pleasure? Let's see, Mr. Freer and Mr. Butler, you call the meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, that was the request of the attorney.
Yes.
Usually the clerk reads the executive session?
Well, good morning. How is everyone?
Good.
Morning.
I don't know if your terminology for executive session means closed session, but I didn't call the meeting. I'm aware of the meeting being scheduled and was asked to be here, Jennifer and I, and it was consistent with our schedule. So we're prepared to discuss matters involving the closed session meeting agenda.
Okay, the first question that I would have is, since I'm responsible for the order of the meeting, someone, I guess, Secretary of the Board would confirm that this request of the meeting meets our ways of operating. We've got two commissioners that have called the meeting. We have attorneys here, and I don't know, you, sir, as a Secretary of the Board, is it required that a majority of the board approve this activity in hiring the attorneys to be here and so forth?
That's never been done before. This attorney's been hired last Board of Commissioners and Commissioner Butler and myself had called the meeting and it went out before Friday, before 10:00 AM.
Okay, but my question, sir, is that there's a minority that has taken this action, and I just need you to confirm that we are in order to do what we're about to be doing.
I believe we are. We called the meeting and only two commissioners are required, except if you're the mayor pro tem, but two commissioners are required to call a meeting. And at any time, we can request the attorney to be at any of our meetings, is my understanding.
Any further conversation from the commissioners about that?
No, I see no difference in the way we've operated before pertaining to these types, this type of a meeting. When I say type of meeting, I mean special meeting.
I would just like to make a comment that this is eerily similar to what happened when Clark Wright was retained as an attorney. Without any conference among the board members, Clark was assigned duties and responsibilities and do research. I sent the letter out complaining about that, and this is the same thing. I don't think, and it's one of the topics I was going to speak with counsel about, how he receives his assignments, whether it should be a majority, whether without us, us being myself and Commissioner Kowalski being involved in it in any way, should we immediately get a copy of the letter so we would at least know what was going to happen in the next few days? This may be permissible, and it may be legal, but it's not right, and it's what happens all the time.
Well, okay, so listen. If three of you had gotten together to call a meeting, it would have been a violation of the open meetings law, all right? I have two commissioners asking for a special meeting today. We could have done an open session, we could have done a closed session, or a combination of the two. I'm not going to give legal advice that I believe should be privileged in a closed session, out of an open session. Not going to do it. I'll do it if the board wants me to reveal attorney-client privilege, but I believe there's a need, given the end of the last meeting concerning your auditor, and I need to give my recommendations and Jennifer's recommendations and our research and our advice to this board for the board to make a decision, potentially, with respect to Reeves and Associates. That's what I've been tasked to do. Now, I'm not, I don't know what the political winds are. All I know is this, special meeting was called. I was asked if I could be here. I said I could, but the closed session portion of this, if you want to go out in an open session afterwards and discuss things likely against my advice that I'm giving attorney-client privilege advice on, the board's the holder of the privilege, okay? But I do feel like there are things that need to be discussed with legal advice and the thoughts and impressions of my firm concerning the anonymous letter that was read into the record at the end of last meeting concerning the town's auditor. And that's what the special meeting is. I understand that this agenda's about.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right.
Do I need to make a motion to go into executive session?
If that's your pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
If I could qualify that, the appropriate motion is to executive session for the purposes of consulting with the attorney.
For consulting with the attorney.
Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, it might last one minute, it might last one hour, but we will reconvene. We reconvene, entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We are back in regular session. And as we left the room, Commissioner Mayor Pro Tem Fletcher reminded me that we did not approve the agenda, and since I don't make the agenda anymore, I would ask the Secretary who is responsible for the agenda, is it your wish to approve the agenda or not, or what would you like for me to do with the agenda?
Yeah, I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, so now, we are back in regular session, approve the agenda, and I guess, Mr. Attorney, I would ask you to give us guidance and direction following the executive session we just came out of.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. I'm not going to talk about the legal advice and the legal recommendations that Jennifer and I provided to the board in closed session. What I am prepared to do is to give a summary of our firm's efforts relative to the agenda items two A and two B without revealing attorney-client privilege, and I'm prepared to do that now. At the last meeting, there was a, Mayor Holden disclosed an anonymous letter he had received dated September 26, 2019, concerning the town's auditors, Reeves and Associates. Following that letter, my firm undertook to review the allegations in the letter with Reeves, and what I'm prepared to say is this. Everyone in our country is entitled to due process, everyone, under the state constitution and the federal government constitution. There has been no finding that we have come across of any guilt of fraud against Reeves and Associates by PC, TEL, or otherwise. We have found that there were three lawsuits, civil lawsuits, not criminal complaints, taken out by law enforcement. Three lawsuits, two of which were from many years ago, around 2012. The two previous lawsuits were settled out of court. I could best sum those lawsuits up in public record as partner disputes, former partners leaving, having disputes. The terms of the settlement are confidential. I do not know the details of those settlements. One lawsuit, which we refer to as the Potts case, is pending in North Carolina business court. There has been no, and that's a civil case, it's on for trial in December, and at that point in time, whatever the judge or the jury returned with a verdict on the claims that are pending for trial will be the verdict, and it's going to be a civil verdict. In none of the lawsuits that I've just mentioned, the two that were previously settled and the one that's pending in business court, none of those involve, that we can see, J. Sharp. As you know, Mr. Sharp is the auditor in charge of the town's audit efforts, and Mr. Sharp sent me an email that confirms all of this, that he's the lead partner in the audit. No other partners that Reeves and Associates are involved with the town's audit engagement. And basically lets it be known that, as we have also verified, there's been no civil judgments that Reeves and Associates is the recipient of, there's no criminal judgments or convictions that we've come across with Reeves and Associates, and probably most, I won't say, we also looked at the North Carolina State Board of CPA Examiners, and there's been no punishment or disciplinary proceedings or findings of any wrongdoing or deficiencies against Reeves and Associates, as I report to you today. Everything I've said so far as of today, based on our efforts, is factual of what we've seen and found. I also report that in looking at Reeves and Associates, they do do a lot of work for other municipalities and school boards, et cetera. The attorney for Reeves and Associates, Frederick Sharpless, sent a letter on October 25th addressing the three lawsuits and confirming what we have independently confirmed to have settled, but it's still pending. Happy to answer any questions you may have on their court, I'm just kidding.
Anything from your commissioners?
Okay. You had mentioned, you'd reference several documents, and I'm assuming that you're going to make those documents available to the town to make public?
The only documents I've referred to is an email sent by J. Sharp on October 25th to my office and copied Ms. Carpenter that has four bullet points, all of which we verified as your lawyers for the town of Holden Beach. The other one is a letter by Mr. Sharpless on the same day, in more general fashion, summarizing and limiting his letter to just the three lawsuits that we had also independently reviewed and verified what's in the letter, which is, two of them were settled long ago. They were largely intra-corporate disputes among current and former partners of the Reeves and Associates firm, and they were settled on terms that are confidential. There is one lawsuit still pending in the North Carolina business court. Anybody can go online and see that. Anybody can go online and see the judge's opinions to date, and that's still pending. There's been no adjudication of whether or not the allegations against Reeves in that lawsuit, or vice versa, are going to be found to be the case. I mean, there's been no trial, and that's what we're all entitled to, is our day in court if it goes up high.
I didn't answer my question, so...
I'm not making anything available on my own.
Okay.
Those two documents are public record, or they could be public records, because they're sent, one's sent by Mr. Sharp. I don't represent Mr. Sharp, I don't represent Reeves and Associates. From my perspective, it's public record, as is the letter from Mr. Sharpless that I've referenced of October 25th, to whom it may concern, is how it was addressed, and I would consider that also a public record.
Okay. I, fine, then, I move that the BOC makes available those reference documents on the website and publish them on the town's website. You've got Mr. Sharpless and an email from Mr. Sharp.
Correct.
And the other information, I believe, has already been made public.
I don't know what other information you're talking about.
Through the agenda...
To the extent that there's any information from my office to this board, given my legal advice and mental questions and thoughts, my strong opinion is this should be preserved as attorney-client privilege.
The CPA verify informations are in. So it's an email from Mr. Sharp and it's a letter from Mr. Sharpless, the attorney for Reeves, that I'm referencing, that they'd be made available through the town website immediately.
But your recommendation not to do that.
It's not true.
Well, first of all, whether you post it on the website or you don't, John Doe from the public can make a public records request in this federal, and she's going to be required by law to produce both of them. So I don't have an opinion either way, they're both public records. Whether you want to voluntarily post it or you don't, makes no difference.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Discussion.
Why can't we just let it become part of the minutes of the meeting and it will then be part of the next package when we have a BOCM and that would be included? So it will be on the web, it will be part of the package that gets approved at the November BOCM.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, we, an awful lot of people are here today for a special meeting. Sometimes we don't get this much for a regular meeting, so there's a lot of interest in it, and as it is available to be public information, I would agree, it probably should be released as soon as possible. Just don't have, make people wait and keep talking about it, but just put it on the website. It's going to be public information.
Any more discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to the motion, say no. All right, it's unanimous, all right? If not, anything else, we will move to number three on the agenda. Is that what the pleasure of the board is?
Sure.
Public comment with respect to special meeting agenda items. Anyone in the audience want to speak? If you will, come to the microphone, give us your name, and speak into the microphone.
My name is John Witten. I'm a part-time resident at Town Holden Beach, 1963, Ocean Boulevard West. It's nice, and someone said to see so many people here to focus on this meeting, and I'm not going to try to change anybody's mind here, I'm going to point out that what happened here is that the mayor of the town of Holden Beach took out a hit on our auditor. And that's a puzzling question. Why did that happen? Why did the responsible person stand up in a public meeting and wave around an unverified anonymous letter? Surely we can all agree, that shouldn't have happened. Because let's trace this through. There's really only two possibilities. Either the allegations in that letter, which the primary allegation, very, very serious, that our auditor had been convicted of criminal fraud. That's pretty bad. If you're, that's pretty bad if you're a normal person, and that's really bad if you're an auditor. If that was true, then obviously the Board of Commissioners had an obligation to look at it and probably discharge that auditor. On the other hand, it could be just totally made up out of whole cloth, and that's another serious problem. That's defamation. That's defamation made by the mayor in a public meeting based on an anonymous letter that he obviously spent no time whatsoever trying to verify the contents of that letter. It took me literally five minutes, when I heard about this, to go online, look at the first couple of those web addresses, and determine there was no criminal conviction for fraud. What have we come to here that we're doing stuff like this in the town of Holden Beach? Come on, people, this isn't the Supreme Court of the United States. We're not tarring Justice Kavanaugh. We're coming in here for God knows what purpose, and we all ought to ask ourselves, what was that purpose? Why is it so important that we tarnish the reputation of J. Sharp? What are we trying to hide? Or what are we worried about? Why are we doing this? And why are so many people sitting back and saying, yeah? Have we really gotten to the point where winning an election for the Board of Commissioners of a little tiny town of Holden Beach is so bad, so important, that we're going to go out and tarnish the reputation of an accounting firm that has a sterling reputation? My company has used this accounting firm. You know, I'm in business, I'm in a business where I'm responsible for billions of dollars of other people's money. I've been sued, I've been sued for stuff like this. I've spent years defending lawsuits that were totally baseless. I know what it's like to have to defend your company. You know, Leon Reeves, I know his firm, they employ about 65 accountants. That's 65 families whose wives depend on that business, just like your families depend on their businesses, just like the town of Beach, the town of Holden Beach's families depend on that. But we're going out and trashing that, for what? You know, there's somebody sitting in this room who knows who wrote that anonymous letter. And that person set out to destroy the reputation of a reputable accounting firm to get them fired from the town of Holden Beach, it would have all sorts of repercussions. What was their reason? There's only two reasons, to make any sense. They either have something to hide in the financial statements and the finances of the town of Holden Beach, or they want to win an election. You know, I'd point out...
That's time.
Sorry.
I move we extend the time.
Didn't request, our policies and procedures are that you request it at the beginning of your speech.
I move we extend the time.
I don't know, how many people here want to silence people anymore? I think we silenced the...
Excuse me, sir, we have to make a ruling. The Secretary of the Board wants to extend, and I guess we need to discuss or vote. It's a pleasure of the commissioners.
I've not had an opportunity to review your process. What's the procedure in place by the Board of Commissioners on those? That's what needs to be followed.
Generally, when someone speaks, they are given three minutes unless at the beginning they request that they be given six minutes. Am I correct, Heather? Isn't that how we wrote it in the end?
I'm reading it now. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to comment during the designated public comment period at any meeting unless the speaker, spokesperson, requests the time limit is extended to no more than six minutes on the sign-up sheet, and the extension is acceptable to the majority of the board.
And I'm sorry, where's the sign-up sheet?
There is no sign-up for the, for a special meeting.
So how would I sign up and ask for an extra three minutes?
Discussion is for the board. Excuse me, sir.
I move we waive...
Your excuse?
I move we waive that ruling, that rule.
I second that. Okay. Mr. Attorney, can you help me out on some technicalities here? Do they have the right to?
Based on, Madam Clerk just read into the record, there is no sign-up sheet. I believe Mr. Witten should have asked for additional time if he felt like he was going to run over to three minutes. I believe the board has discretion whether or not to grant him an additional three minutes.
Okay, so the board did not procedurally operate correctly in having a sign-up sheet?
It's a special meeting, I'm not, again, this is my first special meeting. I suspect that moving forward, we'll have sign-up sheets, but I don't know. I mean, again, a sign-up sheet doesn't prevent a speaker from asking for additional time, and I'm sure Mr. Witten is familiar with the old line, archives of the town, and consider the procedure.
He has been present in many of our meetings, so he is familiar. So without objection, is the position of the Board of Commissioners to extend to six minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
I would just, I'd just like to make a comment that I'm all in favor of it. I've always taken the position that we can have as much input as possible, but it's kind of funny that the same commissioner that closed down a commissioner at the last meeting is the one that's the advocate for this. We should let everyone speak as much as they want to speak and not take, pick which way we want. When the person is on our side, it's okay for them to speak for six minutes, but when he's not on our side, you want to shut him down. So I'm in favor of Mr. Witten being allowed to continue to talk, but everybody should have that right on every meeting.
All right, Mr. Witten, you have three more minutes, sir.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Commissioner Self, and I'm not on anybody's side, I'm on the town's side, which is where you should be. You know, we are here today, we're going through all of this, because the mayor got an anonymous letter, and he decided to come around and wave it around in the meeting, and pointed some commissioners and saying they supported this auditor, this bad auditor, this fraudulent auditor, and some commissioners who didn't. That's why we're here. If the mayor had done what any reasonable person would do, pick up the phone, call Mr. Grady, say, I've got this alarming letter, what should I do about it? I guarantee you, the advice would not have been, why don't you go into the meeting and make this into a political issue? You know, it is time that we stop this stuff. It is time that we start being more worried about how we're running the town, what the finances of the town are, why people are so anxious not to look at things, not to have people talk, than we are about three-minute rules and people's personal feelings and hurt feelings. You know, we have commissioners here, I've heard these guys criticized because they went to the lawyer. They've been criticized if they had gotten together, three of them, and said, let's have a special meeting. You know, we got to stop playing the rules to shut people up. We have to start doing the right things, and we all know what the right thing to do was here, and it wasn't done. Thank you.
Thank you for your valuable input. Anyone else want to speak? All right, if not, we'll move to item number four on the agenda, and I don't know which one of you gen...
Excuse me, I would like to speak. It's amazing. The people who come to the meetings regularly know who the parties are that shut down conversation and comment. We know who the parties are who call special meetings hoping that few people will show up. I'm so happy that there's a number of people in this audience. And I would say one thing, whether the mayor was right or wrong, that's one thing, but if you look at the letter where our commissioners wrote and said that what the mayor did was libelous, if you read the letter that they sent to our attorney, there was a much easier way to do it, and the reason they chose to do it this way is because of the damn election, because they find it more important to be elected than to do what's right for this town. And this is the third time since I've been sitting on this board where Commissioner Freer and Commissioner Fletcher have taken positions to protect their own point of view that was detrimental to this town. detrimental to this town. When we were arguing about Ocean Island doing their groin, Commissioner Fletcher actually said that he didn't have the time to listen to our expert, that he didn't think was necessary. He already made up his mind. Commissioner Fletcher said that the expert, who we had used for years on this beach and who he had just given an award of $40,000 to establish a study that we're entitled to the beach, the sand from the Lockwood folly, he said that he wasn't an expert. He said this in open court. And now today, we have them sending a letter that actually says that the town acted in a libelous fashion. There were any number of ways, the same way that perhaps the mayor should have contacted our attorney, that's what the commissioners who sent this letter should have done. They should have contacted the attorney, found out the best way to do it, and we would have accomplished the same goals, but we would have protected the interest of the town. And that's the way I feel about this, and that's the way I feel about so many things that have gone on in the past two years here.
Here, here.
Okay, are we on number five?
We're on number four.
Number four. We never did number four.
We're on number four. I can honestly say that I was about ready to turn around and say that I have no further comments regarding agenda number four. But thank you, Mike, because now I'm obligated to speak as one of those commissioners. What this letter immediately did to me, and I may read the whole thing and I may not, what this, the, the letter that was sent and dated, September 26th, did for me, immediately raised a red flag for me regarding how the anonymous letter was presented to the commissioners at the end of the BOC meeting. That was on October 15th. But it also quickly drew my attention to the first question that anyone would ask. Is the letter factual, and has the town conducted any investigations pertaining to the validity of the allegations outlined in the anonymous letter? There are a number of concerns on how this whole matter was handled. However, my immediate concern is the current audit that is nearing finalization. What happens if the allegations in the letter are correct? I also felt that part of my fiduciary responsibility as a commissioner is to solicit professional guidance from the town attorney on how to proceed. As a result of how the anonymous letter was handled by the mayor, is the town of Holden Beach exposed to various risk factors to include the possibility of liability? Damaging the reputation of a professional accounting firm, credibility, and worst case after investigating the allegations, are there any concerns on proceeding to submit the audit findings, if any, to the State Treasurer's office by the expected date of October 31st? The law firm representing Reeves and Associates has issued a letter repudiating the allegations in the anonymous September 26th letter. This letter is also required, should be part of the public record, but I think we decided that it'll be entered onto the website. I have a concern. There is a concern, as previously stated, pertaining to damaging the integrity and reputation of Reeves and Associates in public, which could result in possible legal action against the town of Holden Beach. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to that? Number four on the agenda.
Yes, I do. I just want to make sure that the town is memorializing the information that the attorney was given, that there's no credible reason or evidence that has been presented in the anonymous letter that support the allegations that are in the anonymous letter. And I'd like...
Listen, I want to be clear about something, okay? We're not going to get into my legal advice, my thoughts and impressions out here in public. If you want to do it from this point on, I'm on the record as telling you not to do it. I didn't say there was no credible anything. I'm not, I'm telling you my statement that I gave already. Reeves and Associates, J. Sharp, Leon Reeves, anybody else associated with that firm, just like you, Mr. Freer, and everybody else is entitled to due process in this country. You're innocent until proven guilty in the criminal process. In a civil context, you have to prove your damages and you have to prove your claims, and that has not been done yet as to Reeves as of today. They're on trial for their third lawsuit in business court. There's been no determination of liability in that case. There's been no finding of guilt of fraud by PC, tail, or otherwise in any of the lawsuits or anything else I've been able to ascertain from the public records in researching this since the letter became known. I've already mentioned about J. Sharp. I don't have anything else to say about Mr. Sharp, but he's not involved, he's not mentioned as a party in the three lawsuits, neither the two that were settled nor the current ones pending, and Mr. Sharp is your lead auditor, if not sole auditor, for the town's auditing business. I've also said that the book of business of Reeves and Associates is quite large across a wide array of municipalities and schools. And I've also said, as my final point, and I'm repeating, that there is no record of discipline or other sanctionable conduct or findings of wrongdoing by Reeves and Associates' regulatory body, which is the North Carolina State Board of CPA Examiners, as of at least when I left the office this morning, okay? I'm not going to get into credibility. I'm telling you factually what we've been able to find in reviewing the letter.
I think you still have the floor, sir.
Okay. I move that we want that information that was just presented to be on the website and not just the minutes of the meeting.
There was a motion, I feel certain, made a few minutes ago that was going to publish Mr. Sharpless's legal letter of October 25th, 2019, and Mr. Sharp emailed me on October 25th, 2019, with four bullet points, defending himself and his firm and his firm's reputation. I've gone and verified, thanks to the hard work of Ms. Carpenter, information that I have reported to this board and I reported out here just now. Beyond that, I don't have anything further to comment on. I don't have anything further to add, and if I were to do so, it'd be waiving attorney client privilege, which I do not want to, and I'm asking none of you, I'm asking all of you not to do it.
Do you want to withdraw your motion, or are you going to leave it on the table?
I'm not asking you to discuss privileged information. I'm asking you, I'm asking that the information that you just gave in public be memorialized now rather than waiting for minutes.
But they just did that. What other, we got the two, we got the email, we got the letter. What other information you want memorialized that's not going to be documented on the audio and minutes? What other information are you wanting?
You just gave a list.
It's done. I think it's done.
Okay.
Would you like to withdraw your motion?
I will withdraw my motion.
Motion is withdrawn. Anything else on number four? All right, we're going to move to number five, and Mr. Secretary, I guess that, I'll look to your direction on how you do it, number five.
Yep, yep, yep. So the original intent is to, you know, this all came up because it was an audit issue. So the intent is, was to direct the audit subcommittee to...
Audit subcommittee?
The audit committee, excuse me, point of order, Mr. Mayor, to create a committee, a subcommittee audit, create a subcommittee to look into the sources and the policies and procedures and make sure that the investigation reviews of the town's financial affairs. But I think we should broaden that. I think we should look at our rules and make sure that we, we want, find out how this happened, the anonymous letter came public, and look at our rules and update our rules and conduct to make sure that never happens again.
I can second that. We can do that at the next BOCM, put it on the agenda, and work on that to get the language into the rules and procedures.
Okay. Sounds good.
Was that a motion, Mr. Freer?
Yes.
That was a second.
That was a second.
Discussion of the motion. Anyone?
I think I'm confused. What is the motion?
To address the sources.
But are we going to withdraw it at this time and put it on the agenda so we'll have the time to look at the current rules and procedures to determine what we should do? Isn't that what we're trying to say? That wasn't what the motion was.
What I want to do is put the emphasis on, we had something that happened. Normally, when we have something that happened, you go back through your procedures and see whether or not you have a procedure in place for that. My personal opinion, I'd never want to see this happen again. What we need to do is make sure and ensure that there is a procedure in place that spells this out, so that no one can do this again. Thank you.
Sure. Whether it falls within a motion or directive that we're going to do, address this in our next meeting, I'd be happy to withdraw my motion if we have the directive that we're going to review, the, how this letter became public, how it was used, and how we can change our, our rules to make sure it never happens again.
So again, just to be clear, we're going to put that on the agenda for the November meeting.
Correct.
Fine.
To help the chair understand, is the motion essentially to make number five a duplicated agenda item for the next meeting? Is that what...
Sure.
Ultimately, Ms. Pat, do you understand that as a second?
I was looking at 5.3 was going on to the agenda. The other things are, to me...
I would like to, you know, one, two, and three, and we are not using the audit committee or directing them to create an audit subcommittee. So still, the board is going to look at one, two, and three.
Madam Clerk, do you understand the motion?
I think so, yes.
All right, are you ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, the next item on the agenda is number six, which is adjournment. Is our motion overturned? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Thank you all for being here.